Welcome everyone, I am Dee Maitland with the League of Women Voters Greater Tucson. And I will be your moderator for this forum for the winning candidate for Ward 6 in the upcoming Tucson Council election. The League of Women Voters was formed in 1920. We will be celebrating 80 years this year actually. And with the mission of facilitating voter participation through education, voter registration, and encouraging sound voting policies and procedures. We are a nonpartisan organization. We do not support, oppose, or endorse any candidates or political parties. When we take issue of, we, sorry. When we take issue positions, it is only after extensive study and concurrence of our members. To assure we remain unbiased, moderators are selected who cannot participate in the election. I reside outside the city of Tucson and do not know either of the candidates. I'm going to, whoops, one minute. I lost my stuff. I'm going to assume that you all are attending for the same reason, to be informed and conscientious voters who can cast responsible and well-thought-out votes in November. I found it interesting that while the primaries for Ward 6 candidates are Ward-specific, in the general election, all city voters will be voting on all Ward candidates running in this election. So I hope there are voters from other wards here who can get to know these Ward 6 candidates. My job as moderator is to facilitate an open, civil, respectful, interesting, and informative exchange of information. Each of our candidates has signed an agreement to that end. I hope the audience agrees also to this. We have asked the candidates to keep all campaign paraphernalia out of sight, and they are being good about that. So let's first cover a couple of ground rules. We will be muting the audience. Communication of your questions to us will be done through the Q&amp;A function, which you will find at the bottom of your screen. The forum is streaming on the League of Women Voter Greater Tucson's Facebook page, and it will be available at LWV, that's for League of Women Voters Tucson.org after the event. Now to explain how I'm going to conduct the forum. Each candidate will be given two minutes for an opening statement. Then questions will begin with each candidate having three minutes to answer each question. At 10 minutes to 3, we will end the questioning, and each candidate will be given two minutes for a closing statement. Opening statements will be in ballot order. Closing statements will be in the reverse order. The audience will not see the most important person behind the screen, Sue DeOrmond, who's our timekeeper. She will be holding up cards indicating the time the speaker has left to speak. So if you see the candidate's eyes strain, or them hurrying to wrap up a sentence, it's because they don't want me to yell "stop!" After the opening statements, I will ask the first three questions prepared by the league. Then we will start taking questions from you, the audience. You can submit the questions, as I said earlier, by finding the Q&amp;A icon at the bottom of your screen and typing in your questions, which will be forwarded to me. We'll try real hard to get to all of your questions, because I know there's a lot of issues. I will vary the order for answering the questions to assure that each Ward candidate does not nominate by being in first position. It is now my pleasure to introduce our candidates. Steve Kasachek is a Democrat City Council member for Ward 6 and is running for reelection. Val Romero is an independent running for the City Council to represent Ward 6. Welcome, gentlemen. Okay, Steve, we'll begin with you, and you have three minutes to introduce yourself. And please be sure to watch our timekeeper. You can begin.
Got it, we're good, thanks, appreciate it. So thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting this. And it's an appropriate day. This morning, we hosted the Women's March downtown. It was very well-attended. It's appropriate that League of Women Voters would be hosting this on the day that literally hundreds of people showed up to express their legitimate outrage for the Texas abortion rule that went into effect here very recently. So it's great that the LWV has got this front and center for today of all days. Today is about whether or not we have a grasp on the issues the city is wrestling with. You're going to see some stark differences. My 12 years in office have all been about advocacy and being willing to stand for tough positions, to study the complex issues that we have in front of us, and to defend the interests of our residents. Sometimes that's meant standing up against people, groups such as the Department of Defense, the utilities, out-of-state developers, and the state legislature. Some very significant issues incorporated within that sort of umbrella are PFAS water security, water contamination, preservation of iconic buildings such as the Benedictine Monastery. In the course of doing that, helping 20,000 migrants through this community to next-of-kin somewhere else in the country. We continue that work right now. The Broadway widening is an issue that was very contentious within this community for a while. We now are putting the final bow on that with the Sunshine Mile overlay. But that will lead us, I hope, into a discussion about the RTA and what the city's role in that will be going forward. I know vaccine mandates and COVID issue is going to be a hot topic. I'm fully prepared to discuss that at length. And I want to just make sure that people realize that the Ward 6 office, my staff has been top drawer in terms of constituent services. We are your first touch to government, and we take pride in the Ward 6 office of making sure that when you reach out to our office, we're responsive, and we're helping you make your way through the process to the solution that you're after. So my 12 years in office has been about real solutions, addressing real issues, and not afraid to grab a third rail when necessary. And far too often, as a little blue dot in a big red state, that has been necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will hear from Val.
Hello, Hubble, Tucson, Val Romero. Just give you a quick introduction about myself. I'm a Tucson native, graduated from South Point Catholic High School. I'm a father, I've got one daughter, her name's Megan, I'm a grandfather, I've got one granddaughter, Penny. And we're very invested in the city of Tucson. I own a business here in town. I'm involved with lots of different community organizations throughout the city of Tucson and surrounding areas, and I've been very active in our community for quite a long time. My campaign theme is unity in our community. And unfortunately, what I've been seeing, talking to a lot of people, there's a lot of division within our community. We're not working together as we used to. Tucson's a great, wonderful place to live. But as of recently, we've had a little bit more division within our community. I want to be able to bring that bridge together, and let's have a conversation. Let's understand each other, let's support each other. That's what Tucson is, a supporting community. Some of the issues that are important to me are take care of our public safety. That's our public, you know, police and fire. Very, very important that we take care of those people that protect our community. Also, our Tucson infrastructure, not just the roads, but buildings and other things that affect Tucson landscape and then the roads that we drive on. 5G issue is a very important issue. The security aspect of it, the safety, as well as the property value that's entailed with that. And then also supporting local business. As a local business owner, I know the money that is spent within the city Tucson stays, majority of it stays within the city Tucson, and that helps us grow a nice economic base for our community.
Thank you very much. Now we'll get on to the tough stuff. We're seeing questions come in, so you're going to be on the hook. Let's start with just the first one. What is unique about your ward that you plan to address as a council member? And we'll start with you, Val.
Well, that's kind of a difficult one within the ward. There's a lot of things going on within the ward. But also being in a citywide election, the whole city is voting for this position. There's issues that we can address within our ward, but because I'm being voted in in the general election as a city hall, I have to be representative to everybody across the city, the city of Tucson. So that's just the reality of it. You know, a lot of people within Ward 6 have been discussing with me huge 5G. That's the main, not the main, one of the topics that they've been talking about. A lot of the other neighborhood organizations have been talking about, you know, living in place dwellings in their home association areas. Developers wanting to build taller buildings within certain areas. So those are some of the issues that we need to address. I think, you know, some of the 5G has probably been the most hottest topic, because they're starting to pop up quicker and quicker and quicker. And with that, we need to address it earlier than later, because there are solutions. We just have to work together with other telecom communications to get to something that's going to be a better fit for the city of Tucson. Roads is also very, very important, especially in Ward 6. You're bouncing around on some of these side roads, like Columbus between Grant and 22nd. Same thing with Columbus, a lot of these roads that had not the proper maintenance needed over these years.
Very good. Steve, you want to introduce us to Ward 6?
Yeah, that's an easy one. Ward 6 is the only ward in the city that is uniquely positioned with the University of Arizona, smack dab in the middle of it. U of A has just invited back 40,000 students, 40,000-plus students into this community. It brings some significant challenges to the well-established historic neighborhoods that circumscribe campus. Ward 6 has 42 registered neighborhood associations. Many of them are right around the perimeter of the U of A, and they're challenged by the growth of campus. And so we are regularly and consistently fighting a rear-guard action with the U of A wanting to expand. They brought in, they did a land deal with a group called Campus Community Services, and they built what's called the Honors College off-campus, bypassing the city of Tucson zoning. That's just one example of some of the challenges that we have at the U. We also have the issue of COVID in the university. I was front and center on trying to get the university to go out into the towers and do testing, mandatory COVID testing for students who are living in those towers. They refused, and quite frankly, my advocacy on behalf of the residents wound up them eliminating my position after 32 years of working on campus. So the U of A is by far the most unique element of Ward 6. It's not going away. What we have to do is work to manage its growth and manage it in a way that respects the well-established neighborhoods, that many of whom have worked hard to get historic status, so they can maintain the character of those neighborhoods going forward.
Thank you. You both brought up COVID, so maybe we'll start with that. Small businesses plays a big role in Tucson's economy, and they've been hurt significantly by the COVID pandemic. What are your specific recommendations about how the city should support local businesses? And Steve, we'll begin this one with you.
Okay, I'm, don't start at the time, because I have some trouble hearing you. The specific recommendation for the city to support local businesses in terms of COVID, is that what you asked?
We were saying they play a big role in Tucson, and they've been hurt by COVID. What are your recommendations to help them?
Okay, great, yeah, perfect. You know, the city council, we have invested, right now we're working on our second $100 million in terms of COVID, and many millions of those dollars have gone to things such as supporting local businesses, rent assistance, utility assistance. We got some of the money out to help with their payroll on the CARES Act money, the first go-around. In addition to that, we put several million dollars out to support daycare institutions, which are absolutely necessary. If mom and dad haven't gotten anyone to take care of their kids, it didn't matter if they got a job to go back to, they're going to have to stay home and take care of their kids. We support nonprofits, which are essential in this community with respect to COVID and the impact it's had on them. And so we have been very proactive in terms of reaching out and helping our small local businesses. I worked with Pima County, and we talk about collaboration. The county stepped up to the plate and brought $450,000 of CARES money to help small local businesses, not only on the Fourth Avenue corridor, but in the downtown core as well. So the Downtown Tucson Partnership also met with me and the county to allocate those. So it's not just the city stepping up to the plate and helping our small local businesses. This is a regional issue, because the economy affects everyone regionally. And so I've worked with both city, city council, CARES money, ARPA money, and the county allocation to support small local businesses principally right in Ward 6.
And Val, what are your ideas about helping our small businesses?
So one of the biggest things that I've been doing during these, well, I guess most of my entire adult life, is I make sure I go out of my way to support local restaurants. When there's an option where I can go get something that is local versus going something to a big box store, I make sure I go out of my way, even if the cost's a little bit more, because I want to help my neighbors. I want to support them. A lot of that comes personally, your personal choice to support local people, promoting local businesses as a community. I've been doing that for quite a while. Some of the other interesting things are, is, you know, the city of Tucson used to have a business coalition, like advocacy group, where the business owners could tell mayor and council, just kind of advise them, say, "This is what the business community is working with, this is what we're up against. Let's have some conversations, let's come up with some solutions. Let's bring customer service for business back to the city of Tucson." Doing other little programs. Right now, we don't have, you know, there's a lot of jobs that are available for people to come in, but the jobs are not being taken. A lot of them are trade jobs. If there's, if we have a labor shortage within the city of Tucson, or qualified labor shortage, we're going to have a hard time bringing other businesses or people wanting to bring their business to the city of Tucson. So things like that, whether they be programs, or how to work together with the city to find ideas how to promote businesses, where businesses can have a say within the city. Also, this proposition coming up, 206, this is bad for Tucson business. It's extremely bad, because, you know, you're taking the cost of living for some people. I met this lady named Gail the other day, she's on a fixed income, $550 a month. She's 74 years old. She told me within the last couple of months, her grocery bills have gone up $9. She goes, "I don't have that extra $36, I'm having to cut back on things." You know, when you start seeing things like this, and the raise minimum wage, and then you bring the cost of living and the whole city Tucson, Tucson's are going to be, businesses are going to go to the outlying areas, they're going to move shop, or close down their businesses if something like this passes. So this is something very important to look at and address, and I hope all people that are on this, take a look. Don't just look at the fight for 15, look at everything behind it, everything that, all the details that go in if this thing were to pass.
Thank you. The 5G towers has been brought up, it is one of the hot questions we're seeing. So let's talk about the 5G towers. What are your thoughts? And we'll begin with Val.
So the biggest thing with 5G is the safety of these towers, the microwave radiation that these things are producing. Like I mentioned, also property value is an issue, plus security. City Tucson has fiber optics run throughout the whole city. We can bring that same 5G technology to people's homes by having these wires brought to the home and use the fiber optics without having these towers go up all throughout our community. As mentioned, you know, not all the towers are being utilized by different cell companies. They're putting up separate cells, and the plan is to have these within 300 feet of each other, and you have two, you know, major pull manufacturers out there that are putting them up. The city landscape is going to look totally different in the next five years. I believe the best solution, and then also saying so on cells that are already up, there's no regulation of the microwave radiation that can be put on out. There needs to be some type of adapter put on this unit to regulate those, and it should be done at the cost of the telecom communicators, if they want to keep those towers up there. But I think moving forward, we need to let them know, as city of Tucson, we're not changing our skyline, our dynamic, our city by putting all these towers up. We're going to use the existing line that's underground that was put here a long time ago, because we were planning for the future back then, and move forward with that.
Steve, you want to talk about the 5G towers?
Absolutely, let me correct some misstatements there. First of all, Val doesn't understand that we are precluded by both federal and state laws from adopting local ordinances that address the alleged health effects of any of the 5G polls. We have been preempted by the state legislature from multiple ways on lots of different issues. 5G is simply the most recent. And so what I have done is I have met with AT&amp;T and Verizon, they're the prime movers in this right now. T-Mobile Sprint is not really a player yet. And brought in the City Department of Transportation, who is the one who issues the permits for these 5G polls. But we also brought in some of the other utilities, and put together a utility manual that circumscribes the way that these polls can go in. Prior to that, the 5G companies, again, ATT and Verizon primarily, were simply popping a pole down, 35-foot pole down in front of people's, you know, front windows. We took them to task on that, and we said, "Look, you're not going to make the city of Tucson look as though it's zoned industrially from end to end." But we had to do that within the constraints of state law and federal law, the preemptions that we're under. I also brought in to the same conversation, TEP. What is allowed under state law is to co-locate 5G antennas on utility poles, existing utility poles. TEP, their representatives told me straight out, "Hey, we hated that legislation, because they don't want to be bothered having to have a conversation about co-location." Well, guess what? Now we have a utility manual in place, and it does a few things. Number one, it says that you may not run your fiber through people's landscaping. If that's the case, you're going to run it out in the street, even though it might cost you more. That's one thing it does. Secondly, it puts into place a very robust public outreach. Prior to this manual going into place, it's people would get a door hanger 10 days before construction started, and that was effectively their notice. And the most important thing that it has done is it has said to the utilities, "You may not install a new vertical element, a 5G pole, within 150 feet of any other vertical element. That means we will compel them to have the conversation about co-location. That might be on a TEP utility pole, it might be on one of our streetlights, it might be on a stop sign or a yield sign, take the sign down, put your pole up, we'll put the sign on your pole." But what we have achieved is we have gotten them to the table. They're not happy campers about it, they're probably going to run up to the state legislature and try and get us preempted yet again. But until that happens, we've gotten them to the table, both ATT, Verizon, TEP, and some of the other utilities, to say, "Look, we need to have you understand, people have made investments in their property. This is the most significant investment they will ever make. You need to respect that, and you can't just plop a 35-foot pole up in front of their front yard."
Thank you. You guys have a lot to think about, so let's move on to the other one you need to think about. Our water supply is being greatly affected by climate change. What are your ideas to assure we do not run dry? And what are your ideas for balancing economic development and livability for Tucson that will be impacted by water decisions? And Steve, we'll begin with you.
Okay, water security is my number one, two, and three most important issues since this whole campaign began. I am the one who threw a flag on the Department of Defense for the PFAS, and that is a fluorinated compound, it's threatening our central well field. Why did I throw a flag on the Department of Defense? Because we know, because they have admitted in writing, that when they were using a firefighting foam that contained this chemical, they would either hose it into the soil outside of DM, or they would simply dilute it and dump it into the sewer system. The EPA has a health limit for PFAS at 70 parts per trillion. We have found concentrations north of the DM runway at over 1,100 parts per trillion, and north of the Tucson International Airport runway, where the Air National Guard practices, at over 13,000 parts per trillion. That concentration was so significant that we had to shut down our water treatment plant that's been in place for decades, taking TCE and 14 dioxide out of our water. Now, why does all that matter? Because we're serving Colorado River water right now, we're not serving groundwater, because we are in the middle of a drought. We know that Lake Mead is at 37% capacity right now. And we also know that there, according to the ADWR, there's a 66% chance that we're going to be, by 2025, we're going to be at a tier-three shortage, where we will have to start serving groundwater. And the tier-three shortage is on the Colorado River. So we are going to have to wean ourselves off the Colorado River as this drought continues, and start relying on groundwater. We have not got the time to wait for the Department of Defense, the Air National Guard, and the state to step up to the plate and start remediating this PFAS. And so we have done a few things, we've gotten them to the table. We've got the ADQ to put up $2 million to help her test a test site outside of DM. They've also put...
Steve has frozen.
I was contacted actually by, pardon? You?
For a moment.
I had another minute.
Okay, go on.
Okay, back when the PFAS contamination first became evident to me, I contacted somebody back on the East Coast, it's a legal team called Napoli and Skolnik. And I brought them into Tucson. They met with me, with the city attorney, with our water director, and with the mayor at the time, Jonathan Rothschild. And we have now joined litigation against 3M and some of the other product manufacturers, because we know that they were aware of this, it's called a forever chemical. It doesn't just dilute and go away. They've known this for decades. They were aware that they were contaminating groundwater sources back in the Midwest, back when Rachel Carson was writing her book about pollution back there. So they, 3M settled an $850 million lawsuit with the state of Minnesota. We're now in litigation with them. So the plume is moving faster than the process. We have now got the litigation going, we've got the DoD, the ANG, and the ADQ all at the table, and we're saying to them, "We have over $50 million spent or committed on this ourselves. That should cost nothing to the city of Tucson ratepayers." And there is, I, done.
All right. Okay, Val, you get to talk about water. Unmute yourself.
All right, am I muted now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, so first of all, I have to give credit where credit is due, and I want to tip my hat to Steve for everything that he's been doing regarding this PFAS issue, fighting for our community on that. It's very commendable, and I applaud you, so thank you very much for doing that for our community. And unfortunately, my water is not my strong point. I've talked to some people down at the Water Department, talking about piping the water, other areas, other solutions. But I'm not going to go ahead and make things up. I'm going to be honest and tell you, I need more education on different water issues, on how we're going to address our rising population within our community. Find out from like city of Tucson, or Phoenix, or Tempe, what they're doing for their water shortages, and look at other communities that are fighting this battle, and see how we can learn from them and educate ourselves to find out what works best for our community.
Thank you. Since we were on climate change issues, let's ask just one more climate change question. And while our area has been very fortunate to not suffer the climate change fires and floods of other areas, however, we are getting significantly hotter. What are your ideas for protecting Tucson residents going forward? And Val, we begin with you.
Well, I guess that's a hard question, because I think the summer was probably one of the coolest summers that we've had in a long time. At least I've experienced being a Tucson native. You know, there's things that happen within our community, you know, we're talking about carbon dioxide issues, or CO2, you know, issues like, how can we do sustainable energy within our community? You know, solar is huge, you know, our city gets one of the most places with sunshine throughout the year, where we utilize the solar power for our energy sources. You know, I've talked to other people, and again, I don't know a lot much about like rainwater harvesting or things of that nature, but there's a lot of people, things that people are doing using sustainable resources to prepare their homes, so that... But there's a lot of people, things that people are doing, using sustainable uh resources to prepare their homes so that they can utilize these things, become more self-sufficient. Maybe an understanding of how to promote those ideas, again, as a community, what we need to do to, you know, uh fix our our our, you know, carbon footprint uh per se. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot that goes into it, but we can't control the heat of the of the summer or the cool of the winter. Um, it's just, you know, as a city, I don't know what as a city we can do to 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 address that that um that scenario.
Steve?
I I do. Let me, let me help you out with that, Val. First of all, the city of Tucson doesn't take a backseat to the city of Phoenix when it comes to how we handle water. They are actually relying on us, on us to store water for them because we've done such a good job in preparing water storage opportunities. But in terms of the environment, uh, I uh worked in my uh garage at the ward office for over a year convincing city staff that we can make, provide a secondary reuse for cr- for crushed glass, keep it out of the landfill. It's all the reduce, reuse, recycle. This is the reuse. If you come to the war, go to the Ward Six office sometime, the concrete that you walk on when you're walking up to the front door is made with glass that uh that I crushed in the garage at the Ward Six office and mixed it in with concrete. So saving the landfill is one. We're doing the same thing right now with plastic. Uh, we're going to start recycling plastic, melt it down and create construction grade blocks. But we we have identified several projects out around the community right now that we're going to be building with with uh uh re- with recycled and reused plastic. Uh, in the uh, we're also uh adding out our landfill right now, compost of greenwoods that we're going to use in our own landscaping. Uh, we have an urban farming ordinance right now that's in place. Uh, and we are incentivizing our community, our community gardens. Performance specific to the to the heat and uh the the issue you talked about with respect to climate. We have performance-based contracts in place right now for L E D lighting all over the community. Uh, we we put that in place with uh with consultation with the astronomy community. Uh, they've reduced energy consumption by seventy percent consistent with the dark skies ordinance that we have in place right now. So that's one, that's another example. Our photovoltaic systems uh that are solar systems right now are providing over twelve percent of the city's demand uh for uh for energy. Uh, the rainwater harvesting ordinance we have in place right now, uh, we offer rebates uh for all sorts of uh home uh home uh us utilities that uh you know, you know, you're washing your your toilets and all that. And so it's to Tucson Water. We not only have those rebates in place, but we also have a low income uh program so people can get access to those rebates even if they don't have a high income. Green storm water infrastructure program we've got in place right now. In fact, I pulled ninety thousand dollars out of my ward budget to help incentivize things such as uh stormwater basins in in uh neighborhoods uh throughout Ward Six. Thirty one percent of the greenhouse gases though in this community come from transit. And uh I mentioned the Sunshine Mile overlay at the beginning. That is a transit-oriented development zoning overlay that is that is going to incentivize people getting out of their cars and finding alternate modes, uh alternate ways to get around this community. So sustainability needs to be a way, way of life. It's it's not just an idea uh that's good on paper. So we're talking about transit, reduce, reuse, recycle, glass, uh stormwater harvesting, P V systems. It's all over the map and it's something we can't ignore because the, because this is the hottest time that we have ever experienced in the history of this community.
Thank you. Um, I'm moving us into questions from the audience. What, and Steve, you'll be getting, beginning, maybe the beginning speaker with this question. What are your thoughts on Jenna's Law? The law that would make it a felony for anyone to discharge a firearm while having a certain blood alcohol level?
Yeah, for me first?
That's for you first.
Okay. Uh, first of all, the state legislature absolutely failed uh the residents of this community when they, when they refused to pass Jenna's Law. Uh, the Val, Val Romero says that the Second Amendment uh is absolute. Even a conservative Supreme Court justice like Antonin Scalia said it's not absolute and it's a limited right. You have a twenty five times more opportunity, more uh likelihood to die from gun violence in the United States than any other developed country in the world. In the city of Tucson, in the state of Arizona, it is perfectly legal right now to walk up to somebody in a shopping center, buy an A R fifteen from them out of the trunk of their car, cash and carry, no questions asked. That's not even rational. So if Mr. Romero wants to tell the Sandy Hook parents or the mother of Jenna Ayup, who was murdered by a live-in and the state legislature punted on that, that the Second Amendment is absolute, knock yourself out, but I think that's absolutely irrational. We have more concern about the right to bear arms than we have the right to be safe in this state. I'm the one who pulled together a uh gun buyback back in two thousand and eleven uh after the Gabby Gifford shooting. In less than three weeks' time, the residents of this community donated over eleven thousand dollars for me to go to Safeway and buy buy gift cards that we would hand to people if they turned their guns guns in to take them, simply take them out of circulation. We distributed those gift cards fifty dollars at a time in less than three hours. It shows that the residents of this community care about gun safety and they, and they want this to be a safer community. When we tried to pass a uh background check uh legislation locally, the state, state uh tried to preempt us. We then shifted and said, okay, if you're going to do a gun, if you're going to do a gun show in the two and on city property, you have to do background checks. Guess what they did? They moved out to county facilities. We have in place right now an ordinance that says that you may not sell a gun that has a magazine over, over ten on city property. We have in place uh because the state failed. A Jenna's, a Jenna's Law locally that simply says if the police believe that your blood alcohol content is above point zero eight, then they have a right to request a blood alcohol test from you. Uh, the state legislature felt that it was just as just swell for people to go out drinking and then fire, fire a weapon. Even if they were above the the uh legal limit for driving under intoxication. We have now, because of the work I've done, uh an ordinance in place that says if you lose your gun or if it's stolen, you have to let the police know. The Attorney General said that that is preempted by state law and we're saying meet us at the courthouse steps. So our obligation is to make ourselves a safer community. We do, I do not believe that more guns in circulation make us safer. And I do not believe that the Attorney General was right when he said that the the state has a right to step in and preempt us locally. So right now we have I'll come back.
Okay, um, Val, uh your position on Jenna's Law? And unmute yourself.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the whole question, please?
Okay, hello, just one second, let me get to it.
Thank you.
Um, it's from the, oops, I lasted just one minute. It's in my Q and A. Okay, the question is, oops, I got another question popped up. Let me get to it. What are your thoughts on Jenna's Law? The law that would make it a felony for anyone to discharge a firearm while having a certain blood alcohol level?
Thank you. So, you know, I guess that depends if there's a crime that's committed. Um, so yes, Steve is correct. I stand behind the Constitution of the United States and uh in our, in our, in our rights um that uh that we have um as citizens of the city of Tucson, freedom of speech, right to bear arms. Um, but the, if you do own firearms, you need to be a responsible firearm owner. That's the key. And if your blood alcohol content is over a certain thing and you're being stupid and you're not being a responsible gun owner, then yes, there should be um penalties against you for doing something like that, especially if it's involved with a crime or uh something that maybe they wouldn't have done with their firearm and would not have become a responsible uh gun ownership. Gun ownership, it's not just people buy a gun and they're going out shooting up people. A lot of people are buying their their firearms because they're protecting themselves, their family, their property. You know, there are some that go out and use it for hunting and and there's nothing wrong with that either. But it's a, your personal right to have the right to bear arms if you so choose. But that being said, if there's consequences where you're not being a responsible firearm owner and you're using alcohols or other drugs, then yes, you should be uh charged.
Okay, um, that leads us to um the question, what are your thoughts on police reform? And you, Val, you will begin.
I don't know so much that it's police reform. What we need to focus on is um building relationships with our uh current police officers in our community. We need to properly uh uh pay our police force here in town. We need to bring the amount of police officers back to a a a good spot that can patrol the city of Tucson for the amount of people we have. Uh, last I uh checked, we had like seven hundred and fifty police officers. Um, but for a city our size, we need close to eleven hundred. That's a huge gap. We're losing a lot of police officers to early retirement. We're leasing them to transfers. They're going to uh better communities where they're compensated better. The crime isn't as bad. I think there was an article this the other day that has sixty eight um homicides already in the city of Tucson uh a year today, which beat already last year. Um, there's not a of that police presence around to make sure they're deterring different types of crimes. Um, there was an incident just down the street from here uh in Ward Six where there was a, like a bomb threat and the guy was inside uh his house. Um, and they blocked off the whole, whole thing for, you know, for for the whole day. There's a lot of issues um with our police force. Right now, they're the nine one one calls. When someone calls in, I've had people tell me that they've called and it rang and rang and rang and then it clicked up on them. And then ten minutes later, they get a call from a nine one one dispatcher. Um, that's unacceptable. If people want to have their kids running in the street, playing in the street, you know, um riding their bikes in their neighborhoods and we have this element of crime, you know, families are are not going to feel safe to be out there, to engage with their neighbors, engage a lot of things. One of the things I've also seen is the disengagement um with uh with community supporting uh, well, not supporting, or sorry, mayor and council, supporting our police and our fire, our first responders. Um, they, they, they need the encouragement. We need to build up their morale. As citizens, we also need to make sure we promote a a a safe community and we work together. But I think the biggest start would be getting people on the force, make sure that they're trained properly and make sure we incentivize them to want to stay in the city of Tucson and make city a Tucson a very safe place to live and grow a family.
Thank you. Steve, your position on police reform?
First, yeah, thank you. First of all, Jenna Ayup was murdered. Uh, and the state legislature said that was just fine. They weren't going to pass a, a point zero eight on that restriction. Um, because of the responsible budget decisions that we've made uh since coming out of the recession, we were in a position last year to do a market rate analysis on our police department. And uh we gave a market adjustment, uh cost over thirty million dollars. That was citywide, but the police were, the police were incorporated in that. We also gave a compression uh adjustment for the police department so that uh, so that across the board rate increase wouldn't cause wage compression. So recruitment and retention, these are key cost factors with both the public and the private sector. Uh, but I totally supported the pay raises that we, that we gave the police. Um, T P D attrition right now is at about twelve percent. Uh, we are, we are gaining them back at about six percent. It is a very difficult job to fill nationwide. That's not just with respect to T P D. But I do support though, and the question is about police reform. Uh, we are right now at about eight hundred and eighty-four. That's our deployable level uh of of T P D. Uh, we're at about seven sixty. Uh, so we are, we are losing ground, but we have, we have academies in place constantly. We have an open till field policy right now. But what we have to do those, we have to recognize that we are asking cops to make decisions they're simply not qualified to make. Uh, you know, be all things. Uh, it's the same that we're doing with teachers because of the defunding through education. We're asking people to be behavioral health specialists or drug counselors or domestic violence specialists. I I think if you see, if you've seen, and I'm sure everybody has probably seen it five times, the video of that young lady Gabby Patino or Patito, whatever name is where the uh state troopers are interviewing her on the street. And she was clearly in trauma and there was an issue going on with her and her boyfriend. Uh, that cop should have been in a position to engage a co-response with somebody who was skilled in in a, in domestic violence situation to intervene where the, where we're asking a police officer to be all things to all people out on the street. So what we have done is we have now called, we have now hired more people with varied skill sets, whether that is in behavioral health or drug counseling or domestic violence, so that they can come into a situation on a co-response basis and support the police department when they're in a situation that they're simply not the proper person to be called out for. We also have to recognize that fifty four percent of the time, what a cop finds on the scene is different than what the dispatcher from nine one one sent them out to. Why is that? Because people are in trauma when they call nine one one. They're in crisis and so they're giving a certain cer- certain description and the cop shows up and finds something different. He or she has to be in a position to call for support and that support doesn't necessarily need, need to be another cop. It needs to be somebody with a skill set that's appropriate to the conditions that they find.
Thank you. Um, we're back to business. One of the questions from the audience is some business organizations are on record as opposing raising the minimum wage and paid leave. What is your position on the minimum wage and paid leave in Tucson? And Steve will begin with you.
Uh, again, I was having trouble. So is this specifically Prop two oh six or, or because you said the minimum wage and then something that I missed?
They aren't mentioning it, but um they are asking about, I, I would suspect it is.
Okay, all right. Uh, I couldn't hear all those questions. So um, so Val has already said he opposes it. I understand that. I I'm supportive of it. Uh, and before I came to that position, I met with uh um many of the members of the uh small local business community. And by the way, we do have uh business, business groups that are still active in this uh, the city of Val. One is the Fourth Avenue Merchants Association, the Downtown Tucson Partnership, Small Minority Women's Business Commission, the Metro Chamber, the Hispanic Chamber. So we still have those groups in play and I meet with them all the time. When I met with them with respect to Prop two oh six, they, they, they were, uh, the question was, we're having trouble finding workers right now. And those that we have, we want to be able to retain them. And so recruitment and retention is a huge, a huge cost item right now for, for small local businesses. And so what they came down was, look, this is going to get rolled in over three years. It doesn't become fully effective until January of twenty twenty five. Gives us a time, an off ramp to uh, to, you know, glide path to get into it. And so the businesses that I spoke to are generally supported because of that, because of that little rollout period of two, two and a half years. There, it is not, Val is right about this. It is not a perfect uh, perfect uh ordinance, but I mean, perfect initiative. Uh, but one of the pieces of it that is going to go away very likely is the uh probability of a legal cause of action because what it does is it, it, it tries to within the initiative, change the jurisdiction of city court and that has to happen by state constitution or by statute, not through an initiative. But uh generally, yes, yes to the concept, devils in the details, but I have found that the, that the business community right now, because of the difficulty they're having ret- retaining and recruiting new employees, uh they're supported because of the uh, because of the unwrap, the two and, the two and a half year unwrap.
Thank you. And Val? Position on, I guess it's Prop two oh six?
So yes, as you mentioned, I am, I am against proposition two oh six and Steve is correct. There are a lot of businesses that cannot get people to come to, to work for them. And and a lot of people are struggling um, uh, especially in the trades. There's a lot of issues with the trades. So, looking at Prop two oh six, it's more than just, again, a minimum wage. There's a lot of issues that go back in behind this. You know, where they create a something where and this employee uh turns in their employer. So they can turn them in, but the employee, player, sorry, doesn't have uh able to respond back to it. There's already just a complaint. If the complaint goes through and the employee wins, the employee wins thirty percent of that, that money and the city of Tucson gets seventy percent of that money. No one's looking about those different types of things. The Nishar says it's not going to cost the taxpayers any more money to implement this. Why? Because they're charging businesses more on their business license, any other permits, et cetera. So they're, they're taxing this, the businesses of the city of Tucson, might not be paying the taxpayers upfront. But the city, uh, the employer is going to be raising their rates for everything. What used to cost eight dollars is now going to cost ten dollars or twelve dollars or more because the business owner is not in business to lose money. The business owner is in business to so, support their community, but make money as well, just like it's employee goes to work. so support their community but make money as well, just like it's employee goes to work because they're there to make money. The business owner is going to pass these costs to the consumer and the consumers, everybody watching. It's everybody in the city of Tucson. It's gonna be bad for the city Tucson because the prices of everything are gonna go on up. You're gonna be able to go to incorporate unincorporated areas, Miranda, Oral Valley, Sarita, and you're gonna be able to get same items for a lot less expensive because they're not being forced into this um this, you know, minimum wage that has so many bad things attached to it. Um one of the things on it says you don't even have to be, you know, a a form of a a federal ID to to be employed by something. Um like I said, the best thing to do, educate yourself, go to both sides, go to both webpages and see the differences. Read for yourself would be the best thing to do, because once you start reading and dissecting this proposition, you're gonna vote no because of everything else that's that's going along uh along this initiative.
Thank you, gentlemen, that's all the time we have for questions. Thank you both for your really intelligent and well-informed answers and thank the audience for your questions. Um we have learned a lot. Now candidates, will you please sum up your platform, reemphasize what you think is important points and clarify any positions we may not have touched on? All of course in just two minutes and we'll begin with you, Val.
So again, I wanna thank the League of Women voters for having this uh this little forum, we greatly appreciate it. Um as mentioned, my name is Val Romero. Um the election again is a citywide election. So as long as you're a registered voter within the city of Tucson, you can vote in this upcoming election. There's some important things that are gonna be happening um with these initiatives as well as who are your new uh city council members um in the future. Again, my biggest things uh is taking care of our first responders, police and fire, infrastructure of the city Tucson, um supporting local businesses, you know, addressing the five G issues, you know, where we get fiber optics to the house. Working together as our community, bringing our community back together, bringing a vibrant Tucson back where we have industries like the movie industry wanna come on back, we have that, you know, the hotel and restaurants and and we 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 celebrate the differences that we have within a community and we celebrate each of them uh as as a community. Because ideally it comes down to unity in the community. We are what we we're gonna put into our community and if we work together, we're gonna get a lot farther than if we work against each other. Again, thank you very much and have a great day.
Steve, your closing remarks?
Yeah, thank you to the league and for all the people who carved out time in the middle of a Saturday to do this, I I don't know how to speak about unity in the community when you're doing meet and greets down in Val with the same group and not the Val principal was zip ties now. This is, these are incredibly important positions that we're filling right now, you come to a forum, don't know about our water security issues, don't know about PFOs, uh don't have any solutions for climate change, these are fundamentally important issues that anybody applying for this job needs to have studied and done their homework on. My office has taken a backseat to nobody when it comes to constituent services, I believe that the collective soul of this community is good, we've seen that through all the uh the the donations and the assistance we've given to the now over thirty thousand migrants. Now we're working with Afghan migrants, the Haitians, the Central Americans, we we helped through the Benedictine and Casa Alitas. Uh this is, this is the soul of this community and I think it's reflected uh in in the interaction that we have through this office every single day, seven days a week with with members of the community, so please do your homework uh on on the candidates, understand what the positions are. Uh the these jobs are not for the uh for the faint of heart and they're certainly not for somebody who hasn't done his homework on it. Uh the 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 issues are are far too important right now uh for us to simply punt on. Some of the groups that Val's hanging out with calls the January sixth insurrectionists quote chattel that doesn't have legal recourse. I don't think that we call that uh that mobs slaves, I think that they need to be imprisoned and that's another issue where we are fundamentally at odds with one another in terms of our positions on issues and frankly, the way that we're made in terms of uh our ethical, our ethical framework.
Thank you candidates for being here and and thank you for getting to learn about you and uh for me personally to learn so much about the city of Tucson, which I'm very fond of. Um and we are really grateful as a league for this opportunity and hope you continue to run a good and civil campaign. I wanna thank the audience for your attention, I wanna thank Joshua Biddle and Adrian Barton who has been our tech support and going to lead me to a better microphone, I hope. And Barbara Becker, Regina Soot, Judy Wood and Sue De Orman, our timer, who pu- put this all together. Remember November second is election day. Please vote, it's your right and your responsibility. Good afternoon, everyone, have a great rest of your day.